We're ready. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. It's Monday, November 6, 2017. It's well after 7:30. Next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, November 20, 2017. Mr. Paul, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the law?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
And Mr. Albright.
Here.
Everyone is here, so we definitely have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time I would ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First order is the approval of amendments from the October 16, 2017 council meeting. So, no motion to approve by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All in favor of approving the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and the amendments for October 16 are approved. That brings us to the Mayor. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Beidenreich and Council. Nice to see you all tonight, and good committee meeting that I think the majority, if not everybody, was at, so, well done, folks. Just a few things, I know time is late, so I'll sort of hurry through, but you all should have at your desk tonight a copy of Ohio Magazine stating that we are one of the best hometowns in the state of Ohio. So, I tried and tried to get Money Magazine to give you a copy of that. I think I'm gonna just have to call the magazine and order copies, but you, as council people, need to have those two things that celebrate our city because you are here and have been in the trenches for many years now making that happen. So, I will get you a copy of the Money Magazine article saying that we're one of the top places to live in this country. Piggybacking on that, I want you to know, and I want people in the community to know, so I'm gonna utilize our camera person here tonight to help us. We are celebrating the event of both Money Magazine and Ohio Magazine, and the publisher of Ohio Magazine will be joining us to actually present the award to us. On November the 17th, it's a Friday evening, and it starts at 6:30 PM. Now, it's gonna be easy to remember because it's the exact same time or same night as Window Wonderland downtown. We thought, what can we do where we have a majority of the community, or the biggest crowd we can get from the community, to help us celebrate these good things for our town? And so, I worked with Main Street in the Chamber, and so, we start at 6:30 that night with the award ceremony. And we do have things that we are going to share with the community because it's not just us in this room, it's our whole populace of Worcester that makes us who we are. So, we have things to share with our community members, saying thank you for making us one of the best places around. So, that starts at 6:30 with the award presentation. We'll have people sort of circulating through the crowd all night to help spread the goodness in our community and say thank you to people. So, that's gonna happen. If any of you want to be a part of that, let me know, and we will get you fixed up to help us on that endeavor. At 7 o'clock, the Chamber starts with the lighting of two trees. One, the children's tree, which is right there on our square, and then the second one is the community tree out in Worcester Cemetery. And so, they have two people lined up to throw the switch on those two. That starts at 7 o'clock. And then, between, say, 7:20 and 7:30 is when Santa arrives, and the whole thing starts with Santa and the crowd being there. So, that's the plan for the night, and it will go on until Santa wears out and has to head back to the North Pole, and Window Wonderland will be in full swing with the merchants decorating their windows, and it'll be a wonderful evening. So, Friday, November 17, starting at 6:30 PM. The last thing I want to say is about the safety meeting. I am not gonna steal Mr. Cavan's thunder because it was his committee that chaired it, but I -- very good comments from the community, and I took three pages of notes so that we can take some of the comments and then maybe do some action planning from those. I do want people to know that our police do really everything they are legally capable of doing. And those laws, even though you have the authority to make laws in our city, we have to abide by the state of Ohio laws. That's the total underlying piece. You can make those laws stronger, but you run the risk of us being sued as a city if those laws are proved unconstitutional. So, there is a risk involved with making laws stronger than what's on the books at the state level. But we use the state laws to the fullest extent, and anything above and beyond that is truly unlawful, and our police force cannot do those kind of things. So, I want you to know, we know the problems. A lot of times, our hands are tied, but a lot of times, we are working in the background with Medway and other agencies to try to bring results about. Also, with property maintenance, Tim Monet and his team of inspectors, again, enforce the laws to the best of our ability. I think there's been a dramatic change toward the good in our community over the last eight to 10 years. So, I think that we are definitely making steps in the right direction, you know? It doesn't happen overnight, but as long as you keep pushing the ball forward, you're gonna go in the right direction, and I believe that is happening here. Can we still do more? Sure, I agree with that, and we will try to keep doing more. With that, I'm going to end and turn it back over to Mr. Beidenreich, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee reports. Mr. Cavan, you had a safety committee meeting.
Do you want to do that now, or are you skipping the petition?
Yours doesn't count. Communication from the control.
Oh, I didn't, I don't have that on mine, so that's why I missed.
We're just.
All right.[497.12][497.12](Laughter). We do have.
You had the fake agenda.
We do have a petition for liquor license with regard to Aldi's out there on Akron Road. You wanna read that, Mr. Paul?
I would love to read that. So, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, Aldi Inc., Ohio, DBA Aldi 9, 2249 Akron Road, Worcester, Ohio, 44691, they are asking for permit classes C-1 and C-2.
I assume that's the reason why he says?
Carryout.
Carryout, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, we have three options. We can ask for a hearing here in Worcester, a hearing in Columbus, or waive the hearing. So, what's your pleasure, Council?
Move to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the law on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Motion waive hearing passes. If you would notify the Department of Liquor Control, I would appreciate it. Okay, we have no one signed up to speak this evening, so now, back to you, Mr. Cavan. Great safety committee meeting here that started at 6:00, so I'll let you recap it if you're willing to.
Oh, sure. I appreciate it, thank you. Yes, we had a safety committee meeting to discuss homeowners and landlords who own property or properties that create a nuisance in the city, perhaps even permit drug use and drug trafficking activities, not perhaps, but they definitely do. Many concerns were voiced by our citizens. I wanted to give an opportunity for them to be heard. I do agree with the Mayor, a lot has been done, but we're not finished yet. We can't be because of the things that I've heard and the things that I've seen go on. We're not done yet. And some of the suggestions of stiffening the laws up some, taking those on, contacting the College of Worcester, and get with them, and talk with them about some of the issues that are emanating from some of the houses that they have students living in. But we did have a really good discussion, I thought. A lot of people weighed in. We did hear a lot from residents, we heard from administration. I think some of the things that we need to do, I think they're well aware of now, they may have been already, some of them, but maybe some they have not, but we do need to address some of the situations that we've heard for certain, and I would look forward to hearing more about those in the near future. Thanks.
Yes, and I would compliment those that attended from the community. Their comments were well taken, their suggestions were well reasoned, and it was a very civil dialogue.
Yes, and I would like to see us keep our one of Ohio's best hometowns intact and not let that degrade because it did take a lot to get to that point. There has been a lot of hard work, but you can't rest on laurels. We have to keep trying and just keep doing what we're doing, maybe a little better.
Good point, and we do appreciate law enforcement and.
Sure.
Know the difficulties they have, and maybe we can find ways to help them.
Thank you.
And the property maintenance department as well. And are you gonna have a committee meeting on the 20th?
Yes.
And that's at 6:00?
6:00.
6:00.
Finance Committee with Mr. Doherty on stage.
Mm-hmm. And Mr. Doherty, we're gonna have a little presentation before we get deep into the meeting from the auditor's office. Don't tell me, do you have any more room on your walls for plaques?[793.41][793.41](Laughter).
I. I. Kudos to you and your department, so we'll look forward to that. Just using for firewood now, it's got some.
Okay. We don't have any old business, so we'll go directly to new business, and that is a first reading of Resolution Number 2017-46. It will be presented by Mr. Albright, and it should be the only reading because it is a budgeted item. But before I get to our.
We're gonna publish what the zoning is, what is allowed and not allowed in that zoning, and we're gonna require the bidder to not only submit a price, but tell us what their plans are for that. So, that'll be part of that evaluation process. We have a little bit of control over what might, that might be proposed to be used for in that area because we are concerned about the, you know, neighborhood properties there.
Very good. All right. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules this evening on the second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the law on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
The rules are suspended, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Mr. Albright.
I was wondering, Mr. Montgomery, what would you be zoning to ask?
Well, it is currently our one.
Our one.
It is already our one, so we wouldn't be asking for changes.
(Inaudible).
Yes.
I gotta ask this of Chief Salee. A building that's been occupied that long, when you were cleaning it out, did you find any strange or unusual things?
It wasn't, no, there wasn't any unusual, just the transition out of the station, we took a lot of our stuff, so we did it in a slow process, which was nice, but there wasn't anything that was too out of the ordinary. A lot of dust bunnies.
You didn't find any leather firefighting helmets, huh?
No, nothing like that.
Okay.
It was a model of cologne that was about 18 years old.[949.23][949.23](Laughter).
That's a little odd.
(Inaudible).
Any other further comments? Scene ended. Would you please call the law on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2017-35 passes, brings us to miscellaneous. I'll thank Mr. Cavan for holding a very fruitful safety committee meeting. And if you haven't voted, I encourage you to vote tomorrow, and wish all the candidates the best of luck. And let's start out with Mr. Silvestri.
Just wanna say, it's not every night that we do so much dealing in real estate, but it sure is nice to see that we're thinking ahead, and the flag is flying up at our new Safety Service Center because we thought ahead, and hats off to the administration. I believe it was about 15 years ago when we really started thinking about that. I know the study was done 2005.
2007.
Is that 2007? So, that was 10 years ago. And as Joel said, and as Mr. Ansel noted, I wanted to make it clear, 2009, we had an opportunity at this piece of property, but the purchase price that we authorized tonight was $55,000 less than that. So, again, good decision, we waited it out, it's the right time, we're planning for the future, and I'm just glad that we, that we're still looking ahead and we've not rested on our laurels. So, thanks, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Albright.
I want to thank Marc for having that meeting. I thought it went very well, and the audience was very, as noted before by our president, was very respectful, and I think they discussed their issues openly and honestly, and hopefully we can take those comments and use them to maybe start, well, not maybe, but to start word of solution to the problem. I wanted to ask Joel, some months ago, I've been asked by a couple constituents if I would bring this up. I was wondering if you might want to give us maybe a progress report at the next meeting, or if you want to wait till December to find. Several months ago, we put a temporary stoppage on any further discussion of legalized selling points, manufacturing points on medical marijuana. And I'm just wondering if the administration has had an opportunity in the months that have taken place since that decision by Council, whether there's been any thought on your part, your staff's part, about, you know, what to proceed, because a point was made by, I think most of us when we cast our votes, that this was gonna be a temporary restraining order, not.
Moratorium, till April.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, thank you.
Till April.
I forgot the term, moratorium. And I'm just wondering, as we, you know, this is November, we're gonna be into the New Year shortly, whether or not you might give us just a lowdown on any discussion or any feel that you've had from staff about, you know, what this might look like when the suspension or delay has reached that April point. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Mr. Ansel.
Yes, I want to compliment Mr. Cavan and the Safety Committee for an outstanding meeting, and just to highlight that dope dealers and drug users go unnoticed because while we've fought a good battle thus far, the efforts and the focus are going to continue to raise in priorities. It's not going to be tolerated, and to the Mayor's note, we'll exercise our efforts to the full extent of the law. But the pressure thus far has been effective and has had a positive impact. We still have a ways to go, but we identified a number of target issues that we can, through community involvement and involvement with the College of Worcester, continue to create the required pressure to make it very difficult to function as a dope dealer, or a flop house, or a neighborhood decline factor, and make it very difficult and uncomfortable for them to be within the city of Worcester, and that has to be everyone's priority, and I certainly recognize that it is. And then, yes, tomorrow's Election Day, exercise that right to vote, and looking forward to a positive outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. I'll add on, this probably get my tires slayed, but slum lords, dope dealers, and the like are not welcome here in Worcester, Ohio, and we're gonna do our best to impress that attitude upon those that think otherwise. Mr. Cavan.
Well, I think you two just stole my thunder.[1331.73][1331.73](Laughter).
Well, you had plenty of thunder during your committee meeting.
Well, true, but it was a respectful meeting. I didn't think it was, I mean, there's a lot of frustration shown.
Sure.
But I don't think it was vindictive or anything. I think a lot of people do appreciate what the administration does. It's just that, at this point, you know, there's areas where it's pretty intolerable to live, you know? When there's people camping out in your front yard and going through your property and just making it difficult to be in your own space, it's a problem. So, I think that some things have been said that maybe we can look at different avenues and maybe do things a little bit differently, and that would be wonderful, and I would look forward to hearing more about things like that.
Thank you. Ms. Knappich.
Yes, I do agree to some extent that we've made some progress. I know that the police in Medway are really working within the laws that we have. I know that the Building Department is doing a great job getting in and inspecting the buildings and houses and making some changes, but I still think we have a long way to go. I have dealt with people on Spink Street now for a good three, four years, and it has been the most frustrating thing I've had to deal with on Council, to know that these people have to keep their children indoors, have to tolerate screaming, yelling, obscenities, awful behavior by their neighbors, and we have absolutely no laws to control it. And as a result, as they said, they will move out of the neighborhood, people will not move into that neighborhood, the property values will decline, and we will end up with a blight, and we cannot let that happen. We cannot let that happen. So, anything that I can do while I'm here or after I'm gone to assist in writing tighter laws, or making laws that are more difficult for people to be nuisances to their neighbors, I will do that because nobody should have to live the way these people have had to live, in their own home that they purchased with hard-earned money. So, thank you very much for the meeting tonight. It was excellent, it was well-attended, and I think people got good ideas from other neighborhoods as well, which was nice. And I look forward to working with Mr. Beidenreich and Ms. Applebone on improving the situation here for the city, and also working with my ward too, with the College, to do whatever we can to rein in the students who are renting houses off-campus to have parties. Other than that, I would just also like to urge people to exercise their right to vote. This is an off-year election, and I know a lot of people, if the weather's bad and there's not a president to elect, might not be inclined to go out and cast their votes, but it's still something that's very, very important, so please do that, and good luck to all the candidates.
And I would be amiss not to mention, I also will be saddened to lose your wise and counsel here on this august body, and.
Thank you.
Wish you good luck in whatever endeavors you find yourself involved in come Tuesday, so.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Beidenreich. Regarding the meeting that was held earlier with Mr. Cavan, I think there are several very good points, things we should consider. I mentioned this to Chief Fisher, and I'm gonna mention now publicly, I would support the addition of two full-time officers in your department. I think you called them drug enforcement officers, but wherever you see, would see fit. I think our city needs to make sure that this is nipped in the bud, and if additional staff would be able to help, I would fully support that, leading to my next point, which is if I'm in this seat on the 2018 budget, but I suspect perhaps whomever is will also support that, so. With regard to that as well, I want to make note, it doesn't usually show up on the camera because it's always focused up here, but that Ms. McKenzie, Mr. Bostic, Bostans, excuse me, Mr. Chirpik, and Ms. Wardner are all here this evening, and they've been coming regularly, and I wish all of them the best of luck tomorrow as well. So, thank you very much, and please vote. And then, the last thing I want to mention, Worcester Community Hospital had an open house for their expanded facilities this past weekend. I had an opportunity to attend, hear Mr. Sharon speak about what's going on up there. Very impressive. They hosted a very nice event, it was well-attended, it was crowded lines for the elevators and the stairs just to get up through the building to do the self-guided tour, so they did a very nice job. I think we're gonna all be proud of the work that they've done and continue to do here in Worcester. So, hats off to the hospital for their efforts, so.
Instead of replacing the entire fire station, maybe do a bump out, and if we went south with it, we would have room for parking, things like that, versus coming this way and eating into the municipal lot. Sound good?
Yeah. The current, what Mr. Cavan discussed was the potential of maybe having a better come, buying properties off the back for future development, and one of the difficulties was that that structure has good bones, so the consultant that did the master plans for the fire station indicated that it would be best used for renovations. So, when we're looking at it in the future for any type of future development to meet the current needs at that time, it may be more cost-effective to just do a small bump out or addition versus a full building of a new building. We think that would be the most cost-effective approach based on the quality of the building now and the potential of utilizing this property at a.
So, that would be Allah Station Number Three scenario that we used?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the plan was always to keep Station Number One. We need Number One, we need Two, and we need Three, but that Station Number One at this time is probably below par for what is necessary, and down the road, it will definitely be below par in need of upgrades because that at this time is now our oldest station, correct?
Correct.
So, we would be anticipating making upgrades, not anytime too soon, but down the road in the future, and buying this property at a good price so that down the road in the future, we can make those upgrades.
Correct.
Okay.
There's no plans to do anything anytime soon, but we're trying to set, you know, the foot forward to make positive gains in the future. And yes, that is the oldest station, there are some significant deficiencies. We have been able to allocate resources and spread them out with new stations, the addition of Station Three, so we're making, we're moving the right. addition of Station Three, so we're making, we're moving in the right directions, but there is still some significant infrastructure issues with that station that will need to be addressed in the future.
But when you're talking about a safety building, you're talking about a prudent move, it's, it's not going anywhere.
Yes, I think we all acknowledge that having contiguous land adjacent to an existing station is a marvelous opportunity and on behalf of the city administration, delaying this initiative till it put us in a better position to buy it at a more market-driven value, the timing was ideal. And again, I want to reiterate that the quoted upgrades or expansion will be in the distant future with what we've invested in our Station Two and Three now. One is still functional, it has a little lesser volume with the reallocation and I don't see it being initiated while I serve on council. So, I would say, just for everyone's sake, it is in the distant future, but when you can get a land adjacent to the City Hall, the, the fire station right in line, it just is the perfect situation. So, again, my compliments on behalf of City Council for the positioning and timing this purchase at a, at a good point in time.
One other thing I wanted to add is I really think that, that people need to consider the fact that when that station was built, there were no facilities for female firefighters. And now that we are the progressive city that we are and we're having more female firefighters and more female police officers, we, we do have to make those accommodations and that's the one station where it's been a bit difficult to do that. So, I think that when, in the distant future that's done, hopefully we'll have even more female firefighters and we'll be able to accommodate them.
Well done, prudent move.
Anyone else want to weigh in? You have a motion for?
With that, I would make a motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan? Yes.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 33 passes. If things go as Mr. Ansel planned, I hate to tell you, Chief Saley, that you've got to wait at least four years before, probably Mr. Ansel's lost the power.
You never know.
The chief knows my.
The chief, I hope you'll still be on council when we renovate your station.
Well, Mr., it might be a long time though because Mr. Ansel is quoted as, his work is unfinished.
That's right.
If I read Mr. Huse properly. Okay. That brings us to ordinance number 2017 dash 34 and that will be presented by Mr. Ansel and this, I believe, is slated for three readings, so it would require the suspension of the rules. But before we get to that, again, I turn to Ms. DePaulo to read the title.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 34, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate, transfer and appropriation of demolition costs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
I feel a little bit like this is a game of Monopoly. We're in a property acquisition mode mindset this evening and we all know it's not what you sell a property for, it's what you buy it for. And this deal is incredible, it's marvelous and it has two components that really make it ideally suited for the continued expansion in our much-needed downtown parking district on the Bell Avenue corridor. And this, as we are aware, is a distressed, abandoned, fire-damaged property located at 148 Bell Avenue. It's a sound structure, but due to the significant fire damage, the owner was uninsured, so he can't refurbish or renovate without significant out-of-pocket expense. He tried to market the property for a period of time because location, location, location is ideal, however, it has back taxes owed, plus it has some restrictions and setback in zoning that had been grandfathered prior, so it is a, a challenging property due to the fact that there aren't insurance proceeds to do the required repairs. The property has a value on the books at the county auditor's office of $65,730 and has back taxes associated with that property. And the owner, through effective negotiations through Tim Monet's office and city administration, has agreed to sell the property as-is for $5,000 and the cost of demolition, demolition will be another approximate $12,000. So, we're getting prime land within the much-required downtown parking district for about $17,000, less than $20,000. To sweeten this deal structure, the owners of 120 Bell Avenue, we see the little pie charts there in your summary packet this evening, has agreed to donate that little sliver on Lot Three on the northwest corner of Bell Avenue and also has the adjacent alley, alley that runs north of their property to the city. So, now we have the, the damaged house, parcel three and negotiating a potential property or parcel two, but right out of the blocks we will have the available space to expand 20 parking spaces in that corridor. And we know from the past that parking spaces can be somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 a parking space from a transaction cost baseline, so we can see the value that we're being able to achieve through this initiative to get 20 spaces for $17,000. That's pretty remarkable. So, I would not want to delay this initiative. Let's go ahead and get this done this evening. If there are any questions, we can have dialogue. We have met in executive sessions as we're able to do on property transactions in the past, so we're all pretty intimately aware of this transaction structure and I would like to move this to third and final reading this evening.
I'll take that as a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Albright. Would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Do you have another motion on this penultimate ordinance?
Motion to adopt. Ordinance 2017 dash 34.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? This seems to be a very economic move on the city. We can all, you can never have enough parking because people, even when you do, people complain that you don't have enough parking. Swing no further discussion, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 34 passes. Our final piece of legislation will be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Myers, I'll have Ms. DePaulo read the title.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 35, an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate.
And the floor is yours, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biedenreich. The ordinance that we're talking about here is the Fire Station Number Two on Highland. Since we're buying all of this other property, I think it's time to sell a piece. As you know, the Station Number Two on Highland is, has been vacated. I talked to Chief Saley earlier today and it's basically empty, cleaned out, ready to be sold. We reviewed with the administration and the fire management group what we do with the property and I think our best solution is to offer it up for sale as-is with a sealed bid type of an auction to allow us to take offers and see what might result from that. We looked at opportunities to keep it, renovate for storage and other, other options that we might have needs with our, within the city administration and our, we don't, we don't have any needs that would really be cost-effective for that particular location, so. We're going to be asking that we authorize the city to enter into a sealed bid auction for Fire, what's Fire Station Number Two on 433 East Highland Avenue. We also reviewed this previously, I think, at council, so unless there's further questions, I'll ask, yes?
I just wanted to add one thing. And one of the things we're going to do with the sealed bid process is to.
Dean of council, whose time is dwindling here, which makes my heart sad, but I'll have Ms. DePaulo read the title.
Resolution number 2017 dash 46, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for resurfacing and repairing portions of Oak Hill Road, Smithville Western Road and Beaver Street.
Mr. Albright, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I think this is certainly a pleasant piece of legislation to put forth tonight for all this. The estimated cost to resurface these three streets is approximately $850,000. Of that amount, the wired city funds, which we now qualify for from ODOT, is $418,000. We, here locally, part of our funding would come to around $305,000 and because of Smithville Western, part of it being in the county, the county engineers department comes in for approximately $127,000. Now, when you read the description that Roger provided for us, and I thank him for that, this is Oak Hill from Wayne Avenue to Oldman Road, so when this is done next year, this is, by the way, funding for this will be included in the 2018 appropriation budget, so hopefully we can get this passed tonight and get the bids out and then when it's done, why, we'll have Oak Hill from the bottom of the hill all the way to Milltown. Smithville Western, anybody that's written on the portion of Oak Hill from Wayne Avenue to Oldman Road, you know, that was the part of, of Oak Hill that was given the microscopic attention when our, we didn't have a great deal of funding. It was never meant to last forever, but it got us through a rough time financially. Now's the time to address that part of Oak Hill with a more serious application of repaving. Smithville Western, if anybody has written on that road lately, I'm sure you've noticed from Cleveland Road to the eastern cooperation limit that, you know, it needs to, it, it never was meant, I don't think, years ago, when it was, you know, years and years ago, to have the kind of heavy traffic, including truck traffic it has today, so the roads could be on the edges have suffered tremendously. So, and when you go beyond the cooperation limit, the county, I have to tip my hat to them. I took my granddaughter over for a little fun at one of the farms, go through the maze and so on, and noticed that the county has picked up the baton and has done something to really improve a large portion of Smithville Western for Smithville. So, this would put them to Cleveland's, to the eastern cooperation limit. And finally, when you think of major arterial streets running north and south, including Oak Hill, you come to Beaver and this would include resurfacing from Liberty Street all the way to Bowman Street. This kind of project will include milling the existing surface, adjusting manholes and water valve boxes to grade and place new asphalt and pavement markings. And just as a reminder, Roger put this in here, the Wayne County engineer will be participating in this project since, since a small portion of it is in the county and all of the construction engineering, contract management, inspection will be formed in-house by our engineering division. Again, this is scheduled for 2018 and we want to hopefully get this through tonight so we can get on ODOT's schedule. It's a, you know, the lowest and best bid and as we know from the past, putting bids out at this time of the year, we usually get the better prices as opposed to putting them out in the spring and early summer. That's why, if no one objects, I'm going to suggest that we put this on third and final reading and waive, waive the rules. Roger, would you?
I think you need to.
Would you add? I didn't see on the front, it was, not to argue with the president, but it said it is full amount budgeted and said no, and I didn't see anything on the front page that indicated that.
Oh, it will be.
So, we don't have to waive the rules. Is that right?
You do have to.
We don't have a 18 budget.
It's not budgeted because we don't have a budget for 18 yet.
Yeah, you guys can waive the rules on anything.
I'm sorry?
You can suspend the rules on anything you want.
Yeah, well, I just, it said, you know, are you requesting suspension of the rules?
Well, it, it's not set up for a three reading.
You can just draw the lines in there.
Well, that's the telegraph to President of council that there's three readings on it.
That's why I was a little confused because there's nothing on the front side that sets up the three readings, but down the bottom, are you requesting suspension of rules in answer request? So, Roger, would you like to add something?
It's a matter of trying to get it out really. Are you, you do this every year at this point, so the plans are done and we have approval from ODOT to go ahead and get it out, so.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to move to, to the rules and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Albright, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Albright?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, Mr. Albright.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Albright, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion? Anyone want to grill our engineer any further? Seeing no one is in the vindictive kind of mood there, you're off the hook there. Would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Albright?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017 dash 46 passes. And now, look at resolution number 2017 dash 47. This will be sponsored by Mr. Ansel and I'm afraid to say, but my, my resolution shows that it's, at least on the front, is budgeted, so I'm going to assume it's budgeted until, until told differently, so no suspension of the rules will be required unless we are told differently. But before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll have Ms. DePaulo read the title.
Resolution number 2017 dash 47, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to appropriate insurance proceeds to the capital improvements fund.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, we are all aware that any proceeds in excess of $15,000 must be presented to council for approval and appropriation. On July 15th of this summer, a car eight. On July 15th of this summer, Car Eight police vehicle was struck by a drunk driver and the insurance company totaled the car. The sandwich frame buckled, the car was totaled, no one was hurt. That's the good news. Insurance has reimbursed the city for the loss in the amount of $24,490.50. That will replace the vehicle, will transfer the equipment into the new vehicle. So this is a replacement with the insurance proceeds being allocated to the capital improvements fund. So all we are is officially recognizing the reimbursement and the reallocation for the expenditure to replace the lost vehicle. So if there aren't any questions and if Chief Fisher doesn't have anything to add to that, I will motion to adopt.
Select it.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Second by Mr. Cavan. Any questions, comments? Mr. Myers?
Chief Fisher, will we be getting one of the newer SUVs replacement for Car Eight or would there be a sedan?
That's, that's the plan, yes. It was, it was an SUV.
Oh, it was?
That was struck. It was unoccupied at the time. Two officers were on the call. Car Nine and Car Eight, they were against parts on Seacrest Road. Driver came up, hit the back end of one, shoved it in front of the other. Basically, you could see the pinch wound in the roof where it followed the frame. So the insurance company decided initially they thought they were going to try to fix it, and once they got it apart, said, no, we're going to totally.
Good.
So we'll be replacing the vehicle.
Good. Thank you.
Was there any damage to any of the equipment?
Yes, some of it was. I actually had the vendor that we bought come down and go over everything that was taken off the car, go, what can we reuse? What has to be replaced? And I actually have a quote from him. But a large portion of what was inside the vehicle is okay. Things like the push bar are not because, of course, that was shoved into the back of the vehicle.
Sure.
I have to ask, what, what alcohol do you have to have to hit a police car?
Two of them.
Two of them.
Probably the best was when the insurance company called and said, we understand that our driver was involved in a wreck with one of your police cars. I said, no, he was involved in a wreck with two of our police cars. Oh, really? Well, how does that happen? Well, he was under the influence. Well, he never told us that either. I mean, yeah.
Not having a very good day. What happens when you lose?
Any other questions? Thanks, chief. Seeing none, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017 dash 47 passes. We'll turn our attention to ordinance number 2017 dash 33. This will be presented by Mr. Cavan. And this one, I am reasonably assured, assured it's a three-reading ordinance, so if we want to pass it, we'll have to suspend the rules. But before I get to you, Mr. Cavan, I'll have our clerk of council, Ms. DePaulo, read the title.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 33. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This ordinance is authorization to purchase real estate, namely the building just south of us now, on the same side of the street, the Mortimer, well, it's home to Mortimer Insurance at the moment. The idea is to purchase that for future consideration of possibly expanding the fire department should it become necessary in the longer-term future. Not, we're not going to do it tomorrow, we're not going to do it next year, may not do it the year after. But the issue is the price will definitely go up. So we're buying in a bottom-floor price, hold on to it, comes time to expand, we're in the driver's seat. So it sounds like a pretty good plan. I would open it up for questions or if the chief has any other comments he would like to add. We had talked earlier about it possibly being, you know, in...
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Sanders, we'll give you the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not that I really have anything to add, but really do wish to thank all those that came out to this safety committee meeting and to share their concerns and frustrations. And at that point, it's important for us to hear it, not that we haven't heard it already, but again, we realize it's important to them, it's important to us, and just thank you for attending. And that's all I have.
And before I actually call for, I was, it's terrible for an old social studies teacher not to encourage everyone in Worcester to vote. So I wanted to ensure that I go on record encouraging everyone to vote tomorrow because the elections on off-year sometimes are as important, if not more important, than those that are on the even years. So please vote and brave the weather, whatever it might be. Long you're safe and exercise your right.
And I would use the adjective venerable as opposed to old. I would use the adjective venerable as opposed to old.
I agree.
And thank you for the motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.